I don't know much about this, but the town is getting some construction here. And little by little, we are re- by the license of our town. I mean, you know, we are, the majority of the planning is on Highway twenty-one. And I've been very supportive of downtown, you know, ADA streets, construction, et cetera. And hopefully, I'll bring more ideas as, as time goes on and our funds are, are, like. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? If you'll stay right there, we're gonna go ahead and move on to, well, another question. We're gonna go in Rwanda, Idol four, four A. And I'm sorry, you can't see me, it'd be like...
Oh.
But he doesn't bother you. Consideration mentioned to approve and award an administrative management contract to length per community management services for the development of a grant application. And with funding the administration of the downtown revitalization grant through the Texas Department of Agriculture. I will motion on the floor by Councilman Cantu. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ortiz. Any citizens' comments before I take a full vote? Okay? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Councilman. Okay, we're gonna go back up to our presentation, our discussion on the financials of June of this year, two thousand eighteen. We have a comp chart.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmen, Councilwoman. Okay, the presentation of financials will start with the General Fund, Fund Three-O-One. It was a revenue collection of three million, four thirty-one, nine point six year-to-date. With expenditures of three million, three twenty-nine, one seventy-eight year-to-date. With a surplus of a hundred and two thousand, eight twenty-nine. For the Water Fund, Two Twenty-One, collected was, revenue collected was one million, four seventy-nine, sixty-seven. Expenditures are one million, four forty-six, forty-two year-to-date. With a surplus of twenty-four thousand, five sixty-five. With Water Fund, Two Twenty-Two, collected revenues were one million, one eighty-six, four forty-eight year-to-date. Expenditures were a million, fifteen, five forty-two year-to-date. With a surplus of a hundred and seventy thousand, nine point seven. Those are the three major funds that the city has, and those are the ones that carry, uh, salaries. Do you have any questions, Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, are the councilors in the middle?
On the cemetery fund, last week you said we had a hundred thousand in reserve. That it shows beginning funds, ninety-eight, fifty-seven. So we only have forty-one thousand, five hundred in reserve according to this?
Yes, and the reason why I said that is because I had asked the amount from that audit, the fund balance for the audit. And last year, we didn't have it.
In the cemetery?
Yes, in the fencing. So we spent more than what we brought in into the revenues. So that's the reason why the fund balance went down.
So we only really had forty-one thousand left in it to drive it?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
That was the same question I was gonna ask this week.
Yeah, you're asking about the contractor. That makes it a little tougher.
Yeah, so we had a hundred and forty thousand, that's what, yeah, that's...
Mayor, come on. Yes, Mayor and I had a meeting this afternoon, and so we're looking at maybe not doing a monthly, monthly kind of contractor. We just need to do some tree maintenance, it's a big maintenance thing, and I'm just looking at them because our staff would probably keep up with it. But some tree trimming and some package issues to help address some of the issues that we have. I know Councilor Ties is working some things about the cemetery. So we definitely want to make sure those special holidays, centers, for giving for the peanut festival, or Veterans Day, Mother's and Father's Day, that we can have a contractor to assist our staff. And so we looked at some of those numbers, but we don't want to complete that, that fund balance.
And, uh, yes, I did say that it was about a hundred thousand dollars that we had on the fund balance, but I was always looking at that audit. So there's other repairs that happened on this current budget, so that's the reason why it went down. And I did mention that funds were limited at that time.
Yes.
I was also gonna ask about the four A, like we're minus fifty thousand? Is that what, we already spent seven thousand more?
Correct.
Seven thousand, five hundred. Okay, and then, on the revenue fund, is that one hundred and forty-nine thousand that was short?
For the month of when... For the month, yes, because we only received revenue of eight twenty-eight, and we have spent nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Okay. Going back to the cemetery, how much did we spend on that fence? It was probably just the fence, it was the fence. There was also plenty of, uh, to do that at the line of entrance. So it wasn't just a fence that was caused that. The fence was, I couldn't give you exact numbers, I wouldn't be exact. Since that is my responsibility, I can give the council, the information representative fencing. There was a fence cleaned up, destroyed, and integrated with the Plumb Street Cemetery, which is the city cemetery. Probably you have to let funds of a cemetery, but it had not been maintained that.
Back on, back on the wreckage, uh, why, why are we backwards on the wreckage?
Sometimes it will be because we collect, the revenue is on the, on the bill. But we get collected, uh, we collect the big trash cans for commercial, and if they require more pickups. I cannot exactly pinpoint and go and review it, I was not expecting that question. But, um, usually at this time of the year, the reviews goes like that, it starts going on the minus, and then expenditures stop, and we start accumulating revenues.
If you have any questions for Mayor?
I would like to go to the sales tax pension. And for the month of July, we collected, I'm sorry, the month of June, we collected two hundred and eighty-three thousand, three seventy for the month. That divided through the C, the street fund for A and for B, uh, the C collected a hundred and forty-one thousand, six seventy-five. Uh, year-to-date, month, from this month to current month to last year's month, we increased our revenues by eight percent, which translates into a money twenty thousand, one ninety-three. Year-to-date, to June, from this year to last year, uh, we have a nine percent increase, which goes to two hundred and eight, four ninety. So this year, uh, compared to last year at this time, we have collected more sales tax than last year.
Okay, are there any questions for, is not all this sales tax collection?
If not, please plug into my recorder.
Council, you have a great new expenditures, and if you have any questions concerning those?
I have on the next page, I have grants and donations for seven thousand, which is that, um, quite big.
The following page, page one thirty...
One of them, yeah, I'm sorry.
One of thirty-five.
One thirty-five.
Hey, your question is on...
On a general administration, what is that grants and donations for seven thousand?
Okay, general administration includes police department, uh, all the departments. And, uh, that grants and, um, I'm sorry, I haven't seen.
It's, uh, right there, where's his?
The grants and donations. Okay, these is part of the, uh, Blue Sana, the sales, uh, money that they use for the summer view, uh, donations for, get the projects that, uh, the city manager will have. Any money they come seeing, it goes into that revenue line and... The expenses are dispersed through the departments. So for example, Blue Sana, the department, or the police department, five three, has an expense account for Blue Sana. So I make sure that what they collected in donations, that's what, that's how much they're gonna spend. And so it's on the sales, um, summer view program. We also collect that, it goes to the general revenues, which will be on, um, grants and donations. And then we have the expense account that is equivalent, and it's on the general administration.
And the one following that, the transfers?
Those are the transfers, they come from other funds, like the ones that the artists were talking about, for example, the water and the sewer and reviews, and all those transfers they access, they're all fun with their operations.
Can you write the seven hundred thousand on that?
That is, is for a year, yes. For next year is gonna be happily.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, on page two, that's three, five, Parks and Recreation Utilities. Says we got seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars left in the utilities. Okay, if you go to page two, two, three, five, our utility bills for Parks, seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three. But two, two, three, five, under Phelps. Eight twenty-two? Thirty-five.
Two, twenty-two, thirty-five.
Yeah, twenty-two, thirty-five, right, it's twenty-two.
It's, um, page twenty-two of thirty-five. That one is thirty-five, thirty-five.
Under Phelps, shows our utility bill was seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three.
No, sir, it's eight thousand, twenty-six, sixty-four.
Okay, we'll say eight thousand, twenty-six, sixty-four. Okay, we'll say that. We have seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight left. We're gonna be over budget for July.
Yes, with these eight thousand dollars is the whole bill for the city. And then it gets allocated.
But I heard that this, five, seven, zero, five, two, zero, six, five, one, oh, one, that's a Parks number, right?
Three oh one, five oh six, five eleven, one one. And we only charge, out of those eight thousand and twenty-six dollars, we charge seven hundred and forty dollars to that budget.
Two Parks?
Two Parks.
Okay, so...
Everything else, like, uh, three, four, two, three, way to water, forty dollars to sewer, uh, five hundred and seventy to this, this, uh, I mean, seven thousand, one thirty-three to this location.
This location?
So, yes, so all the bills, even though they come in one bill and one total, they, they have their location. So we divide and we allocate by the location.
So we'll be okay on our Parks?
Yes, if you look on, on page two of thirty-five, okay, you will see also the monthly, uh, burden period. So we're, we didn't just pay that one bill, there's several bills that come to the city, because they have different cut-off things. So we paid total to the Parks, two thousand, two forty-two, and forty-six cents for that current, uh, period, which means the monthly of June.
So is we paying for two or three months of a time?
No.
One month?
We're paying a month, yeah. But there are several bills that come to, to the city, that they have different cut-offs, where they...
Or is it, you still have bills for this one?
This one will be on funds, five seventy, which you won't have to go to page...
Is that five seventy, two twenty, is that the seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three for this building?
Five seventy, okay. It's on page sixteen of thirty-five. That's the civic center, and we paid eighty-four thousand, I mean, eight thousand, four hundred and fifty. And that one we have paid, uh, we made in balance of twenty thousand, one sixty. So we should be okay for the rest of that thing here. It's only three more months, or two more months, don't worry.
Thank you.
You are.
Um, can I ask a question? Okay, Tony, on this, um, page twenty of thirty-five, this running, uh, I...
Yeah.
Is that contractor that we hired, he come?
Yes.
Does he work with everybody, or just certain people?
That, that is specific, let me, hold on, let me find it here.
Page twenty of thirty, twenty of thirty-five.
Yes, uh, that was the last bill that we paid him for when he came to help us fix the system. But you're gonna see more bills, because he's also helping municipal court to implement the cash collections on their in-code part of it. So we can completely finish integrating it. So right now, we have a case number on in-code, and we're working on that. And when they're gonna implement it, that's when he comes. He only comes when it's necessary. And he comes to help everybody in the city, it's not just for, for the, for the finance department. And I wanna clarify that. Uh, he works, he used to work for in-code. Now he is a consultant of in-code, does the software. He doesn't do accounting, is the software. So when he came, what he helped me do was correct the system on the background, because he knows how it works. But he didn't help me do accounting. That was not his purpose to be here. Thank you. Any more questions?
Page twenty-six of thirty-five, uh, second to the last, Washington County Education, I believe, is foundation, uh, two hundred dollars. Why is it classified as office supplies? I hope the twenty-six of thirty-five.
This looks to me like it was, uh, um...
Was I, or something about it, it was classified as being?
I couldn't tell, well...
Yeah, we will, we will look at that, well, because I, I can't, I know we have Washington County Education.
I know, it's a non-profit organization. Okay, then. I believe they asked us to take a, uh, out, if they were, an end, and come around to an end, which one else? Why was, why the liberals said, uh, school supply, it's your, it's your school supply, it's your office supplies, but I don't care. Because we, we make donations in reference to, uh, donation, because that is a non-profit organization. We made, we've been there itself, and they used to come and ask to take the other classes out, and I think that's about what they asked us to do. In support of, either support of, or back to school, and then the school supply, the office supplies, but I don't care.
I'll talk to you, I know, and give you a response, either on the budget portion, or on the, uh, council meeting?
No, no question. On page twenty-three, no, page twenty-eight of thirty-five. On the, uh, city of Earth, all credit cash, is that such a key content?
That is a small fund of two hundred and fifty dollars per clerk. So only two clerks on the fund list have that. And that's for, let's say, emergencies, and they just need to go and get a tool, that is two dollars, seven dollars, five dollars, at Tim Mart or Walmart or anything like that, that, you know, Monica is not there to hand out a credit card or to issue a purchase order, so that's what that's the credit cash is for. They also use it when they do the, um, water meetings, and, uh, they send the staff of water department to go and have those meetings over there, we provide for their lunch. So it was, it's about ten dollars a person?
Yes, uh, this, a large amount of six thousand dollars was put back in credit cash, because when we had our free class for the two days, we had to have enough for bank here, and so we have to order a one. So that's why we can take cash back, that's why we can take cash, because we have drawers here at the business center, uh, during, but this is for the month of June. So during, uh, for free class, we have the two days, we need to supply and have cash on hand.
So I accept that much enough?
We'll be taking out with it for events, I'll just take it on. Yes, but we have to save the end, they don't.
That's okay. Is all the questions there?
Okay, on page twenty, page again. That came with six hundred and thirty dollars in that account, five, seven, zero, five, two, zero, four, seven, four, five, zero, sponsored then. Was that for the Fourth of July Freedom Fest?
Yes, yes.
So all of them, that was on this page, and the next page, Jason Mitchell and Victor. That's all free, was that all included in our manager's recorded news that we, this paper that we read? That was part of the fifty thousand dollars we spent?
Yes, because we have, even though it's a city sponsored event, they're not, uh, as we do for any other event, they're being secured at that time.
Right.
And so that's why we have to be able to do that.
But that was all included, that fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, it was all included at that time. They were doing, and Tommy did go and give him his spend down for that, but those officers, they remember it's a cheating event.
Well, you had, I would worry about the officer that I mean, when they, when they, but yeah, there's a couple officers, which I know we need, there's no problem there, that you pay. And, uh, but I guess, all, all of them was included in the Fourth of July event, is all I worry about, fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay. But when will we get a report on, you know, the profit? Because he also said, well, sure, and some of the staff, that was...
That's, that is maybe made his, his, to reply, his presentation to the Florida Board. Uh, we'll have the final numbers, and it should be in office, they can come and present it.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I really provided him with everything that we have in our system when it comes to revenues and expenses. And, uh, we, he still needs to reconcile, because, for example, these expenses, uh, even though they're on five seventy, they're, they're on sponsor events, they're not on Fourth of July, so they need to be moved.
Okay, so you'll have that, because you said you have some check issues too, with the contractors, you had to take cash?
Yes.
And checks, you'll have all that clear at the time, as long as...
Yes, yeah, we had to void those checks, and what they did is they, they pay out of the credit cash, the six thousand dollars, they pay those bands, and then we get the checks back. We voided those checks, we issued those checks to the city of Earth, they don't cash them, putting them in cash in any asset. And that's a clear way to, to do it for accounting purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Idol Three, Steve, the two thousand eighteen November general election, we have our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, if I may just very quickly, as council members are aware, the city has in the recent past, the recent past, elected to enter into an agreement with the county, allowing the county to run its general elections. In that regard, um, Ms. Turner and I met with Onda, who is the county election administrator. We also met with her assistant, Rose, where we learned that the joint agreement is basically good for a year. So that is something that I think that in the near future will be presented to the council for either the council's approval or not. Um, I have reviewed the agreement. Uh, in that regard, the agreement indicates that while the county is going to be running the city election, if the cities don't vote for that, uh, they basically get to be in charge of everything. They get to, uh, designate their judges, they get to designate the places that they will be utilizing, uh, and we get to share the cost. Um, in meeting with Onda, she also indicated to me that we actually have some machines, that she has some of the city, um, machines that are there in her establishments. Now, in regards to that agreement, uh, I know, I noticed that it's not in your packet, I have reviewed it. It is a yearly agreement, it's not on the agenda today, but I did wanna advise you that that is basically already announced. So if the county is wanting to contract with us, or if the city is wanting to contract with the county, that would be something that will have to be discussed in, in the very near future. However, I have researched it. I researched the election code, I researched, um, the website for the Secretary of State, I researched local government, and our charter as well. And there is nothing that indicates that we must enter into a joint agreement. That is something for the council to decide.
Well, that's it. I'd like to make a motion to bring the city election back to the city, of course.
You cannot do that.
There's not a motion?
Uh, it's a discussion.
Oh, discussion?
Uh, this is a discussion, Sheriff. We did not want to present an agreement, we both didn't want to enter it. So if you want to enter it, we can bring that forward. If you don't, there's no sense in taking action, because the agreement that she had, has, is returning, as it has expired.
Okay, so it's coming back to the city?
It's coming back to the city.
Okay.
Councilman?
How much money can we save with the county doing it?
Uh, I was presented with some numbers today, I did not have them. So I have not totally had a chance to look at and review them in some of that nature. I did ask Onda for numbers, but she did not give me, but the numbers I was presented with show run of, uh, runoff election that was held in two thousand fifteen, and it shows a fee of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. And then another one in two thousand sixteen, and that one showed a cost of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And then the two thousand seventeen, down, drastically, we went down to eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six.
It's a lot of change.
So I don't know what these numbers told you, you tell? I can look at them, and they report back to the council, they know this is utilizing our machines, or not utilizing our machines, and what did we pay for? I just, I walked in.
Still great state, it's where they kept on.
Could be. But whenever we look at it, we're gonna have some expenses. Uh, whether we do it with the city, we do it with the school district, or, I mean, we are the city, or we do it with the county, there's gonna be expenses. Uh, the school district, I think, is going to be presenting an item today, so they're gonna be asking, I'm not mistaken, uh, to ask that we share in some of the costs for an IT person, the salary, is that correct? And that will be half of sixty-five thousand. Uh, the county also in their agreement indicates that if any of the machines break, we're totally responsible for that. Uh, if there's other fees, you know, valid fees, and judges, and stuff of that nature, we have to assist and, and pay some of those fees as well.
Okay, Bonnie, do you know how much we saved last year roughly? Do you have any idea?
As far as of how much we saved?
How much we funded first, and how much we paid now?
Um, I do not, I don't remember how much we budgeted, but the invoice for the county, when, the invoice for the county will be, will be, they billed us seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-one cents for the whole election.
Then we bought it. We bought it with twenty-five thousand?
I, I'm not, I, I don't remember exactly, but it was something close to that. I don't remember exactly what the, what they...
We, we will need all those numbers, uh, if the council so chooses to put this on, make one on the agenda coming up, but we need to have numbers to compare.
We, uh, sponsored that item on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah, I realize that it was very inconvenient for some people to go back there behind the gym, so...
We spoke to, um, okay, because I was confused. And I know some people felt they're, uh, they've already secured the American Legion Hall to do their election, uh, and the location would not be, you know, because sometimes they could, they could choose, sometimes they could choose to go, but they jumped in to do the American Legion from their location. Uh, and still they're finishing a hall, uh, they need to, because it has to be in that precinct. Uh, they did not have the indication they would use it, how even if they help we open the town, uh, they already secured the location of the American Legion.
And I, and I, Ms. Turner, and I actually did some pacing, I think, because we did want the citizens of Florislo to come in and see how beautiful our new city hall is going to be. So we really wanted to show it off, that we thought that the elections would be a perfect opportunity, but it didn't appear that that was something that they were willing to vote on.
but it didn't appear that that was something that they were willing to go down, which was unfortunate. Did I correct this, Turner?
Yes, and I believe two of our machines are there, that they used in last election, we had our machines, we just left them, that they have to be secured, but it is definitely your choice if you want to partner or not, it is not an argument.